Student report. And we have Nathan and Heather here tonight. They are not yet appointed as the student representatives to the board because the deadline is September 30th. But they are making a report tonight, so we thank you for that. You can begin.
Morning City Football is currently two and one in conference. They recently lost their last game Friday to Lakeland thirteen to twenty-four. Their upcoming games are the Bell game this Friday at Rydlander and the homecoming game next Friday against Medford.
Cross Country is not big enough to have a team compete in the conference, but they are currently running a meet at Gartske Polac today, and they have a meet this Saturday at the University of Minnesota.
Boys Soccer is currently zero three and one in conference. They also lost their last game to Lakeland on Friday, one to four. Their next games are tonight versus Northern Pines and Thursday against Mozeni, both of which are home conference games.
Girls Swimming is oh and three in conference right now, and we have a meet this Thursday, Berks-Mozeni, and next Thursday against Rydlander. Volleyball is three and two in conference, and they defeated Tomahawk and Medford over the weekend at the GNC during the annual. And they are playing Lakeland tonight and Tomahawk on the first. And girls tennis is four, I think, four and one in the conference, and they have a meet, a GNC meet on the twenty-eighth against Rydland.
Regarding homecoming, Thursday, October third, there's a community assembly at seven PM in Schofield Stadium with the Powderpuff Football Finals. Friday afternoon, there's a school assembly here at the high school, and the homecoming parade begins at four PM at All Saints. The homecoming game is at seven PM versus Medford, who's currently undefeated. The homecoming dance is October fifth, which is Saturday. For all high schoolers interested in participating. Homecoming activities this year include decorating the school, stunts by volleyball, powder puff football, float building, dress up days, and the football game. Mr. Blood will be taking the Drama Club on a trip to watch Hamilton the Musical at the Fox City Performing Arts Center later this fall, likely towards the end of November.
Spanish Club is taking a trip to Costa Rica in June of 2020. They have started fundraising and will update you guys as more information is available.
National Honor Society members have been volunteering throughout the summer, and they've continued to this month as well. Members recently volunteered Saturday at the Believe Walk and Run event.
DECA has started planning their Mall of America trip for the end of November or the beginning of December, when that will be decided at the next meeting.
The Fall Choir Concert is October fourteenth at seven PM in the Ball and Theater. And FAFSA Night is October seventh, which is an opportunity for students and parents to receive guidance on how to fill out the financial aid portions of the college applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to new business. Committee of the whole, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
I move the board to approve the committee of the whole minutes from August thirteenth, 2019.
Any questions or discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll go on to seclusion and restraint report. Is this Heidi?
Yeah, did you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any way that we'd be able to see previous years as well?
I did share at the bottom.
Oh, you did, okay.
I have last year's, so there was a significant increase.
Oh, that's what, okay, okay.
When I came into the district, they weren't tracking it in any fashion, so I started three years ago. So we have data for three years.
Perfect, thank you.
Heidi, do any of these ever result in having to call the police?
The seclusion restraint, I would say that they may have that in mind, yeah. But that's not, that's not our job, within the law, that's not, will be documented, but I can't say that there were police calls.
Okay.
So, I want to define restraint versus seclusion for.
So restraint would be any time that you are preventing a child from going where they want to go. That's the simplest way that I can say what a restraint is. Seclusion is when you are secluding them away from their general affairs and will not let them be with them. Those are, that's like the layman's terms, though, I can share more.
So this would be restrained?
With them. If they were, if they were fighting me to go somewhere else and I'm holding them, that's a restraint.
Okay.
And so we would use...
If you, if they were going to leave the classroom and you said, no, you can't leave, whether you physically restrain them or you tell them that they can't leave, does that go under the same...
It would be physical, if you tell on them, it has to be a physical restraint.
Okay.
And so we have staff that are trained. So under Act one twenty-five, which was passed in 2011 in this state, there are certain circumstances and that require documentation of seclusion restraint. And so it has a whole list of things that you can and can't do. It also requires staff to be trained in nonviolent crisis intervention. And we have chosen CPI, which is the Crisis Prevention Institute. That's how we train staff in seclusion or restraint. Or in, it's really de-escalation, eighty percent of it is de-escalating students. The rest is how to properly restrain a child or seclude a child so that you are maintaining their rights, your safety, and the safety of the student. So part of you are required to have one to two people in every school to be trained. We have more than that trained in our buildings right now. And our goal is that all staff, mostly special ed staff and IAs have been trained in the past, but our goal is that all staff will be trained in nonviolent crisis intervention so that we have consistent messaging.
Can you tell me why West, you know, has nineteen incidences versus North or East, which only have two?
I can say that, I'm not sure that North's, I think North was under-recorded, just so you know. The process that we have was that we have a form that's required to be filled out in laws that govern that form. And so when I work with Donna, I don't know what happened to, I think there was probably more. Sometimes they weren't documented, and so that's why we're trying, you know, we need to have that process. It's not about whether it's wrong or right to do it, it's about documenting it for sure. As far as West, they may have had more students. Or you can see, we don't, not only on that report do we document number of incidences, but it's the number of students that have been restrained. So I believe that there were nine total, eight were special education students. And so West may have had more students that had more behavioral operas that required restraint. So that's not all I can say.
And so how are we doing this year?
We have, we have a few that have been turned in for seclusion restraint. So I can't tell you, I would say probably around seven so far. Mostly with one child.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions?
So you had three years of data, and the numbers went down this, this last year. We have seventeen eighteen, how did look the other two years that you have this data?
The, I didn't, I would have to pull, I don't have enough, I have one more year. So I have sixteen seventeen, I don't even know that I have the sixteen seventeen data because I discovered that they were under-recording. And they were not, they were secluding and restraining kids and not documenting it. And so that's when we did more training and we had to have a system where people were, were at least documenting what they're doing so we would know what was going on. I would say that from last year, the year before last, to this past year, eighteen nineteen, part of the reason it went down, I believe, is because people were more trained in de-escalation techniques and were able to use other means than secluding and restraining children. And we hold that, that maintains. If you notice, there's a lot more students, different students in seventeen eighteen that were restrained than this year.
Heidi, just like, let's just take West, for example. Do a certain, do you have to have a certain number of people trained in a building? Like depending on your, the population of the building? Are these, and are they just special needs people that are trained? Or can it be any staff member?
Any staff member can be trained. And I would say we do have some, a fair amount of regular staff that were trained. I think West may have had most of the staff trained in the past.
I just pulled West out of...
But I'm just saying because they have higher needs.
Higher needs, okay.
It's not, the law doesn't say for every whatever child because the whole rules to use techniques that will reduce the need for seclusion restraint. So it just says one, they require one person to be trained in CPI. Now, our goal is that, so we have two new people that are trained in, Wendy Simonas was our old trainer. And so we have two more people that were trained this summer in CPI, and they will be offering trainees, so Kelly LeBeck and Nathan Hanson. And part of them getting trained was to support the schools in order to create crisis teams so that they can have a response, what we call response teams, so that multiple people can be called. We try to manage that with classroom responsibilities. You know, a teacher can't always be called out of their classroom to respond. So we try to, whether it's IAs, whether it's support staff, whatever, that can also be trained to be able to respond and follow behavior plans that are written, so.
So how many times a year do like, do they train? Like you said, they want to have one...
My goal, my goal would be that it's kind of like a fire drill where you are training maybe monthly, where you are, at least you get quality response teams. But the key to that is those people need to know the behavior plans of those students that might have a seclusion restraint potentially. So, or it just a behavior response. So it doesn't necessarily have to end in, in a seclusion restraint, so.
What percentage of the staff is trained?
I can't say percentage, I can tell you how many, I don't have to do the math. We just, we have a deck in our office, we get up and remember. As of June of this year, and I've shared that with all the principals so that they know who's in their buildings are trained. Oh, we're a lot that are trained.
That's good.
So I, I can send that in, yeah, Friday's memo?
Definitely good. And then one other question. Do substitutes, take this training? People who normally substitute, who substitute a lot?
We haven't done that. And I, I wouldn't necessarily, I think it would be good to have them trained, but I would not have them part of the response team because that, if you're not in the building and you don't know kids, then you could actually set off.
So if somebody is substituting and something happens in their room?
There should be a plan that if, the whole idea is that if there's a sub in there, the sub knows and has a plan. If there's a kid, you know, that, they should be working together well in advance, whether it's a special ed student, counselors, whoever's on that team for that child. They should have something prepared so that if a sub comes in, they know, okay, this, this is Johnny and he might need this, and like that special ed teacher is working with them to make sure that they try to mitigate some of those things that might happen. And so they should never go in there. And, I mean, I'll, that's, it's a, we need to do a better job of making sure that our subs and our plans that we have in place for these students so that everybody feels safe and knows if a sub knows who to call. Okay, if so-and-so is doing this, then I know I go get Mr. so-and-so across the hall, or I know I have to call this, or I have that. They, we need to, we need to have those plans in place for staff, for staff and subs.
So subs feel safe when they come in?
Yeah, I want, I want everybody to feel safe.
Okay, any other questions? We will move on to third Friday enrollment.
Andy, I just don't have anything to report yet. I know that both Bobby and Stephanie Parker have been working very, very diligently, but it's super preliminary at this point to, we'll have something for you next week, as soon as we're done.
What was, this was last Friday, was third Friday, right?
Correct.
And the deadline for the DPI reporting is October fourth.
So we want to make sure the information's accurate.
So maybe the Coward didn't have it?
Yes. We put it on our working log for October.
Okay, so we have, we move on to board action, and we have the sale.
And that's me.
Yeah.
So I made some notes. Won't surprise the educators in the room who are actually board members either, but when you have a new school year that's underway, there's a lot of, you know, excitement and maybe some uncertainty. So until you really get in there and see the students and how the flow of the day works, et cetera, it can be a little chaotic. So we had an additional dynamic this year, which won't surprise any of you, and that is with consolidation. So we had younger students than we've ever had before report to the middle school, et cetera. So all things considered, I'm really pleased with the start of our school year. But these are the bullet points that I listed that we all know for certain. And that is, both staff and students can feel overwhelmed as we work, like Heidi said, to determine the best plan for each individual child, whether or not he or she has an INP. Because some without, they have another plan certainly as well. And there are days when that plan might not work at all. And then there are days when it works really well and you're thinking, we're going to do this again tomorrow, and it doesn't work at all. So they have to be fluid, and it takes a lot of collaborative effort to revisit those plans. And the teacher's role, as they know, every role in education is incredibly complex and challenging. That goes without saying, but I don't think we say it enough. So we're working hard to provide tools to support everyone, including our students with emotional and mental health needs. And as someone who's been in this business for a long, long time, and some of you certainly can say that the days of, you know, having one lesson plan and having it meet the needs of your learners, it really doesn't exist anymore, not if you're going to do your job well because they will tell you that the gaps in learning that can be in one classroom are very significant, as are the behaviors. So, but what I'm most proud of in public education in this district is that we take every student and we work tirelessly for every student. That's key. So Heidi talked a little bit about seclusion and restraint, and I would just like to say that for students who have an IEP, we start with the least restrictive environment, and I'm sure that's a term that noneducators have heard as well. But that means we start with the regular classroom. And then if we have indications that that is not working or data supports that that's not the best learning environment for that student, then we work to identify other spaces or programs or something that might work. I've heard the term full inclusion a few times now this fall, and I'm, we're all trying to wrap our heads around that. Full inclusion would mean that every kid is in the classroom, the reg ed classroom, all the time, and we don't have that. So we have right now, currently, thirty-three percent of our students are out of that general classroom more often than they're in. And we feel that number's too high, but we can't change that overnight. But that's just a, you know, evidence that we're not full inclusion.
Julie, can I get a point of clarification? Did you say thirty-three percent of the students are special education students?
That's special. Special ed, thank you for that clarification, Tim. Yeah, thirty-three percent of students with INPs. So it's, you know, when we look at that a student might need more than or something different from the regular classroom, then we have to work to provide, you know, people or places, whatever that difference might be. And again, it's trial and error. Sometimes we try something and it doesn't work, and it's a very fluid but time-consuming process. The other term I wanted to address that you may have heard is inclusive communities, not to be confused with full inclusion. And that is something we're working very hard toward. And the definition that we're learning through the grant that we've been awarded and other places, and I, by the way, this is a collaborative effort here with my admin team, but we're creating access to inclusive environments where all students have the opportunity to receive high-level instruction. So we don't automatically just say, you are scheduled to be in this room and not with your core language arts teacher, for example. And it has to do with creating communities of support regardless of disability, race, language, socioeconomic status, trauma, et cetera. And again, it takes all of us. So you've also heard from Kelly and others that the universal is where we're putting a lot of our efforts, and that would be in the reg ed classroom, universal instruction. And that's because research does show how impactful that is on a student's achievement. So we do want that more often than anything else. But it's not enough just to say, okay, the student will be in your class without arming that teacher with all of the tools and supports. And there are a lot of them. For example, Heidi talked about, no, you didn't actually, not tonight, sorry, intentional social emotional learning. And I don't know if you recall, but we brought Dr. Hartwig in, and he helped us with the screener to help us determine where kids were at and what their needs would be. Mental health resources, grant opportunities. We partner with North Central Healthcare and others in bringing therapy in the buildings, which we're very proud of. We applied for and were awarded the Trauma Sensitive Schools Project, and we have a team on staff, two members who are certified in youth mental health first aid, and now are training others. The safety grant through the Department of Justice, and we have a safety team where we're training stakeholders in youth mental health as well as threat assessment. And again, Heidi serves personally on the Citizens Review and Drug Endangered Children panels because we know that our schools are simply a micropossum of the greater society at large. And what impact we can have now will only benefit society later. So, and we are really grateful for all of the outside supports we have, again, like North Central Healthcare, but you may have heard, we have to establish protocols. We want to know who's coming in our buildings and when. So that's currently underway right now. And we want to partner so that we know, we have a seat at the table and can help determine what would be best for a child to and can communicate with those community resources. So it's really complex, and I think what makes the most exhausting part of teaching, if I draw on my past experience, and they can tell you, the most exhausting trying part is also the most exhilarating. And it'll never happen for kids without the blood, sweat, and tears of the staff. So I'm just really proud, but recognize that the work is not easy. So for those of you here tonight, thank you for all you do. Any questions?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Remember the tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three, the pyramid? Okay, we had tier one in place. That was like the interventions in the classroom and...
The, right, the core instruction.
So two and three are finished now?
I would say for some kids, we know what tier two and three look like in terms of a systematic plan, and any of you out there, feel free to jump in. The, the absolute pathways, I think we're tweaking all the time. And we want them to be user-friendly so that staff knows. But for kids, sometimes we call them, you know, the most active or frequent flyers, kids that, that are on our radar daily. I would say that we know what their two, tier and three are and are working to change those to meet the needs as well.
Okay. So let's say you have a student that you've talked with the parents, you've done all the interventions, and everybody agrees that it's time for a referral.
A special needs referral? It's okay?
Of course.
Okay, because I, last year I kind of got the feeling that until tier two and tier three, there were... You had to stay at tier one. Now I better understand your question.
It was at tier one, but there was no two and three yet, and so I was like, okay.
Right, and that, and the law, I'll, where's Megan?
Well, I can address that.
Heidi too, yeah. So the law would state that you do, and I don't know all the specifics, but you do have to try other things first, you can't automatically go to...
You can, you can refer. We take all referrals by law in Wisconsin. But like parent referrals that come in, we talk to them and we say what's being done, whether it's academic or behavioral, and if they still want a referral, we process it from this school level. All we tell them is that we need to work through these interventions because regardless, when that referral comes in, even if you do it right at the beginning, we still have to do the process and document and put them through all of those things. And if we don't have that documentation, they won't qualify anyway. So we try to be proactive to prevent referral, but even if they, we say we're going to do a referral, we still have to follow the process and procedures and the law that's in place to make sure that we're defining disability and not be...
That's exactly what I meant to say. Does that make sense, Mary?
Yeah, so like, like let's say a new teacher comes in, first-year teacher, and they're overwhelmed, completely crying overwhelmed. And does somebody tell them, you know, Johnny, maybe the teacher from the previous year, this is what we tried last year, just kind of a heads up, start your documentation now?
Yeah.
So somebody's telling these new teachers that, you know, before things get majorly out of hand?
I, I can... I can speak to that. Go ahead. So I have three new teachers at my building at North, and I met with each of them personally and went through the behavior pathway. So what it is, is it, the behavior pathway is the universal instruction support that you're providing. And then if you're noticing that you have other concerns, there's a pathway of support that in our district that we have, which includes like peer observation, so having a peer come in your classroom. There's self-reflection checklist on like routines, procedures, and different supports that you can check on your universal stuff first, as well as, you know, there's links in that behavior pathway for tier one strategies and supports, such as one of them is like a two-by-ten. So one intervention that a brand-new teacher could try, that I talk to my brand-new teachers about, is a two-by-ten. So for ten days, you would spend two minutes with, you know, such-and-such student about anything, you know, talking to them about their hobbies, things that they like, trying to build that relationship. And so then through that, if that's still not working, then, then we get more supports. But absolutely, we have teachers that meet with, you know, I have a new first-grade teacher that communicated with the previous teacher, if possible. Last spring, we also had shared some documents within our elementary level for students that were transitioning to new buildings so that we can provide different interventions, strategies, and supports that helped with those students, to best support them.
And I think we can get better at that, Mary, honestly. I mean, I, I saw the documents that were going back and forth, like the teachers from the previous school, the teachers that, when they were consolidating, like here's some kids, and that's all, that's, that's great. But I, I feel like as, as we move forward, knowing that we have a lot more struggling learners from trauma, from, you know, a lot of background stuff, that we, we can make that a priority to make, make sure that we're sitting down and talking about that more intentionally.
Okay. Tom actually had the idea this summer, it would be nice to plan a day or a time where counselors and case managers got together and actually did a person-to-person handoff with individual students. So we set them up for success as early as we can. So...
And they made sure I wrote it down, so we knew that.
All the principals, elementary principals, we did talk about last spring, where to, now that we're having kids coming into the three buildings and having multiple tracks, where would be the best placement for students? And knowing some history on behaviors and relationship, peer relationships... And knowing some history on behaviors and relationship, peer relationships, both positive and those that weren't so good, where, where do we put the students in the classrooms to maximize student learning? So all of those conversations took place, in addition to, you know, looking back on if a teacher did have some documentation, trying to gather that and forward that.
Okay, so is this pyramid that we saw last year, is there a completed pyramid now? I mean, it had level one, and then the other two tiers were empty. Help me, they were empty?
Well, I think this goes back two years, perhaps, when it was empty.
When I got on.
When you got on the board and the teacher said, "Well, we know what to do for tier one, but you're not really telling us what to do for tier two, tier three."
So is there like a completed pyramid now?
I would say that it's not a pyramid, so I'm not sure what that was.
See, it was, I remember she, she showed me, it was like, and tier one was here.
Yeah, we have a pathway, that's columns.
Okay.
And so...
So that's kind of set up the same way.
Yeah, universal is not, and I will say that we are, we are not where we need to be universally, and that's on us, and we have to continue to build on that, right? Our universal into tier two, we still have supports in place. It's just not aligned, and we need to do better as far as teachers having access and knowing what to do. We absolutely need to do better with that. And we are building tier two and tier three, like we have these things, but there's not, we have to have infants. We have to, we have to continue to build that, so that people know what to access and when. And so it isn't completed. It's a work in progress, flat out. The kids that are in special education that already have plans, that already have these behaviors, they have behavior plans. We need to do a good job and a better job as special ed to make sure that we're communicating with regular teachers, that they know the supports, that we're working together to make sure that those plans are in place as well. And so with consolidation at the middle school, that's an area that we need to, I mean, we have to continue to get better, period.
So what about the non, the kids without an IEP that are non EEM that are out of control? How, where, at what point does something happen within that classroom to like remove a child? Or, you know, they're, they're swearing at the teacher and calling them names that are not appropriate to be calling anybody?
You mean like a daily removal, or are you talking like a...
Just like, I, I, just these negative behaviors that are, they seem to be escalating. And, and I, I, you know, we used to, in the old days, you'd just said, "Go sit in the hall," you know? And what if, what if you, what if a kid won't cooperate with you? Or you call somebody and you can't get the kid out of the room, because that happens. What do you do? How do you deal with that? And what, and, and Danielle brought this up a lot. What about all the other kids that are there to learn, and you've got this constant disruption? And, and, you know, I guess, I'm old school. I, I think that if they're disruptive, they should not be in the classroom. Do you know, you know what I'm...
But that would be seclusion.
I know it would be seclusion, but what about the other eighteen kids or twenty-two kids that want to learn something? I, I, I think that this is becoming more of a, a problem. I think maybe that's why these teachers are here, and I see some heads going up and down. I mean, how can we help the teachers, help the kids that are having these, you know, what, what do we do? Because I think it's...
Well, I know there isn't...
It's out of control, huh, in some situations? Come on. Yeah.
I know there isn't one answer, I would say.
Well, no, there's not going to be one answer.
Yeah, case-by-case basis, you know? So I was at the middle school and West today, and overall, you know, just making walkthroughs, things were good, but there were definitely kids who were not able or had been removed from that setting, so then the process begins to reintegrate them, because rarely, if ever, is it permanent. So then, you know, there's a process of, you know, a protocol according to that student's plan, right?
And earn your way back in.
So do students have plans that say, "Well, you're only going to be in the classroom this month, two hours a day, and then we'll evaluate that, and hopefully you're in three hours a day?"
You can't do that with a, a child with regular education. I, I mean, you have to be careful.
With an IEP, I think.
With an IEP, that would be in a plan that you could, you would...
If you had an IEP, that would be a plan.
Yeah, they're already in, but Mary was talking about those students who aren't in.
Are not, they're just discipline problems. That's what I, I'm saying, but not...
So you can't do that for kids who are...
I'm just saying you have to be really careful about removing a regular ed student from the regular classroom without going through those, those systems or some ways of, of that. I'm, I'm just saying, like, that's, we would be removing, I mean, we have huge amounts of trauma, and we have huge amounts of students that are coming from backgrounds where it's not just discipline anymore. And it's, it wouldn't matter if you said, "Go sit out in the hall," and the teachers will attest to that. It's, "F you, I'm going to run down the hallway then." And that, these are kids that are coming in that they're, I mean, we, we, it's not just about discipline anymore. I wish it were that simple. For eighty percent of the kids, that works for my kid, that works for her. I can say, "You're on your phone too much, I'm going to take your phone." She doesn't get on her phone anymore, she gets her phone back. That's, we have to realize the amounts of mental health and trauma that are in our community, and it's not just anecdote. This is, this is a crisis of many, in many school districts, we are not alone. And so I, I feel like we have to have a community conversation around how we're going to work with all of our students, because we can't find, we can't build enough schools to separate kids out, we just can't.
So to, I think to address your point, Mary, if, you know, if our typical, or like you said, old-school strategies would stop those behaviors, we'd be doing them all the time.
Well, I guess sometimes I just think we're setting some, a lot of these kids up to fail. You know, like the, you know, you do math for three minutes and then you can go outside for recess. So then they get a job, like, you know, "I'm going to do this for three minutes and then I'm going to have a cigarette." You know, I mean, what, I, I guess...
It's not us that's setting them up to fail, it's their own failures.
Well, I know, but, but they're coming to us.
They're coming to us to solve their problems.
To solve their problems, and we, I think we need to, we need to come up with some better, some better, we, I don't mean we, I mean we, need to come up with some strategies or something to help these teachers, because I think that's part of the reason why so many people are getting out of education. You know, they get burned out. And I think already at the beginning of the, the second day of the fourth week of school, I think that we've already got people that are stressed beyond belief. And, and when I talk to somebody who's been teaching for twenty years, and I'll say, "Hey, how was your day?" "It was good, but I'm, I'm struggling to, I'm just not feeling it this year." "I'm not, I'm not," you know, kind of like the passion is going, because it's the constant getting sworn at, or getting bit, or getting hit, or I just, I, I don't know. I think there's got to be something that we can do as a, as a staff, the IAs, the teachers, us, some, to come up with something to help not, not only the kids that are, that have trauma and have all of these home situations, but what about the kids that don't? You know, they're, they're losing out. They're losing out, and, and I find that heartbreaking.
How long, how many days in a row can they be bad before we actually say we are going to suspend these kids? I'm sorry, I was late, I was harvesting potatoes, so I missed the beginning.
That's all right.
And we do suspend kids, I mean, but again, it's, it depends on a lot of different factors, certainly.
I mean, but is there like a five, if you get in trouble five times, are we going to suspend you for a week, or is that...
No, it isn't that, like...
The degree of situation.
I would, I feel that we're talking on behalf of a lot of people in the room when we have a lot of people who have a lot of experience in the trenches, so to say. Is there a way that we can open it up to people to provide their input, or some of their...
What's that man's name, Robert?
I, I've worked with a lot of you in the past, and I know a lot of you have a lot of experiences that I'd like to hear, if that's, can we open that up to the floor, is that an option?
I guess we'll do that, and I'm just going to say that I'm going to limit your comments. Couple minutes.
Andy, and I think also we have to make sure that there's no personal identifying information in any of the discussions.
I would assume that all those people know that, no personal identifiers. Okay, anybody got a comment up there then?
Come on, now's your chance.
We'll start with Terry.
Community member, I think all the problems is, we as community members don't know the degree of the problem we deal with every day. We don't hear about it in media, we don't see it in police reports, and we don't get any instruction on how we should respond when we see some kid just misbehaved in a grocery store. What's consistent with what you do on a daily basis? And I'm of the opinion that we're so afraid of offending somebody for disciplining their kid, and we don't hold the parent accountable in any way. So it's not just a school problem, it's a community problem, it's a society problem. We need to be leaders in this and step up and start doing something. Like JD said, where's the limit? At what point does a kid know he's going to get a smack in the head? For us old-school people, whatever. But at what point is there going to be a consequence for that kid and his parents and his grandparents, anybody else who has responsibility over that kid? I think we need to do more in the community, educating us as to what the expectation is, what the response should be, and sometimes they want to be smacking the parent against the head to straighten them out.
Thank you for those comments, Jerry, I, I don't have enough time, and I could be spending it in jail. But, so does anybody else here have a comment?
I'll say something, I'm Billy Janger, teacher at the middle school, first year there, has been at Spring Valley for four years. And when you're talking about in a very complicated situation, I totally respect that I have great immediate leadership in my building. They're doing everything they can. In my personal opinion, our system is broken. Our system is broken because we have too many kids coming into hostile environments because of form of inclusion. And I need to advocate for the other twenty-two kids in my classroom to ensure student safety. Also, I need to advocate for my fellow staff members. As a school board member, I was once a school board member. We need to ensure several things when you're elected by the community. One, ensure the safety and education of every child in your building, number one. Number two, you're a big employer. Ensure the safety and a quality workplace for your employers, or employees, okay? Those are two things I think we need to work on, because there's too many of my fellow employees, we three, that are starting to shift other workplaces, because they don't feel safe. I have coworkers of mine, my cohort, I call it being assaulted. They're getting hit, because they are working with a very challenging population, okay? And it just bugs me, especially if it's a female, that the students are back the next day. Students are back two hours later. I'm called A-hole, I got lots of names that were given to me this year, which is fine, I can deal with that. But I look at the other kids in my classroom and they scatter, because someone walks in the building or someone walks in my room, that's wrong. I look at those kids as my own children. I don't want my children in my own classroom, because it can't guarantee their safety all the time. So, very complicated discussion you're having, but please, look into it. Your children, some of your children in this district, or in our district, or some of your board members used to be, have their kids in our district and now are gone. I have great quality families that are no longer in the district, because they want me to be able to challenge their students and ensure safety for their students, for their children. So I have great leadership and lucky to work in the building I work in. Our hands are tied, we don't have enough staff, and they're doing everything they can to provide us with that safe workplace. I don't know how long you guys want to keep me in the district, but I, I, first time, this last week, first time in five years, I walked up to that building and I said, "Am I leaving? Is this my last year? I'm not here to blindside anybody, but I'm not the only one in my building, and it's nothing to do with our leadership." It's the system that we're working on, there is broken. If I'm hit by a student, my administration won't like it, but I am going to come to you and pay. Don't set yourselves up for a lawsuit, somebody's going to get hurt in my building.
Yeah.
Or anywhere. If we don't address these behavioral issues, academic, all teachers that are here, we work with all different levels, that's understandable. I have students, all different levels. But when it comes to safety, it has to be number one. And I'm not educated in special ed, I don't know the laws, but I'm a parent, and I am one of your employees, and I hope that you would give all of us a safe work environment. I had fellows, staff members last year who are no longer with us, strung three times, punched three times. That student was still in our school, and that staff member's no longer with us. One I mentored last year, had a very difficult classroom, she's no longer with us, brand-new, awesome person. Could have been an awesome teacher long-term. That's not the only reason they left, by this point, that we're providing a great, safe workplace for them and helping all of our kids. I do believe we'd be able to retain those folks. It's not about, hey, I'm here making a lot less than I could work elsewhere. I'm here because I'm trying to be loyal to the person that gave me my first job. That's Andy, stole off, that's people that were here. And, you know, I'm in a position, and, and we don't want you to micromanage, and Ms. Gray, you're doing an awesome job. Things have to, you know, we, we all constantly need to, you know, improve, and, and I think that's what they're trying to do. And I appreciate we're not opening the gun. But you do need to hear from the staff. Our management shares is doing the best they can, but we're working on a system that needs to be drastically adjusted before you lose more of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
We'll be back tomorrow.
Yep, is it, okay.
Julie Perez, um, with a community member that was speaking, I think if we could, you know, we can't fix home, like someone said. And when we have these events at school to try to educate parents on different strategies and things like that, we get the families that mostly, there's exceptions, but mostly the families that come are the ones that really don't need the help. And I don't know if it becomes part of, if a student is having these behavioral issues, if it's mandatory. Because if we can make something mandatory, maybe these parents would learn something, learn a strategy to help their child, and so, "Hey, you know what, I, I can think of that, this is really good." I mean, I could be having high hopes, but even if we can do that and touch one or two families, that's successful, that's one or two that you get on board, and maybe learning some strategies to help their child be successful in school. And I don't know if you can make that mandatory or not, I mean, I don't know all the laws, but there could be some parents that would say, "You know what, I'd rather do this than have my kid suspended for whatever, or expelled, or whatever." But maybe that is something to investigate, I guess.
And I ask one, and one more thing, and I won't say the other word, but for trauma-sensitive, my fellow, my kids, they're traumatized. They're traumatized because of the adverse, then having their teachers swore at, things get thrown around the room. So when we talk about trauma-sensitive, I, I hope we would, again, look at the outcome of some of these students, and their behaviors are traumatizing way too many good kids. And they're all good kids, some of them... kids, but we need to start focusing on them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this a question of a PBIS discipline system and that we just need a totally different system? Like, what are the other options that are out there?
I mean, PB, there's good things about PBIS, but for some reason...
Some ways that something's broke.
Something is broken and in this, this look behavior things, we need to focus on these extreme, I'm not talking about behaviors or being facetious, these extreme behaviors. But PBIS are our positives there.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a comment? Do you wanna get in there before I shut these off? Okay, so, I think we're gonna have some further discussion on this in the future. But unless anybody else has any more, we'll stop there for tonight. Now we'll move on to the sale of plus people, elementary school.
I move the board accept the offer to purchase from the town of Rowling for the entire Pleasantview Elementary school property, including all buildings and land for the amount of $1.
Before the board votes on this, I know I was five minutes late, but the office doors were locked and I didn't know what stores to come into. Would you be willing to give me a public comment on all this before you vote on it? You're willing to open it to the public for the other discussion?
Yeah, that's, I'll give you a minute.
Okay. Before the board votes to basically give these away, you're getting rid of a lot of equity for a dollar. I question why it wasn't open to the public as far as offers on these properties. I was told to give it back to the taxpayers. I was told that Pleasantview was offered to only Rowling and Ackley, was not offered to PEC, Lilly, or any of the others because it wasn't involved in those townships when it was designed. By giving it back to those township, to that township, you're not giving the same advantage to the other townships that paid tax dollars for maintaining those buildings. I feel by not opening it to the public, because I know from personal interest in some of these properties, you're throwing away money. I just ask that you consider that before you do that. Also, by giving it back to the towns, you are per se cutting off your own foot. That's an extra 40 acres or 38 acres on the town crestwood. That would be considered going back into the tax rule. By giving it to the towns, you're gonna, they're gonna stay out of the tax rule. That's extra dollars out of your own pocket. I just ask for a chance either to bid on them, per se, but that's all I got to say.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? And I think we'll do a roll call vote on these.
Holden?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Nufa?
Yes.
Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Passes and move on to the next one, the sale of Crestwood. If you prefer a motion there?
I move the board accept the offer to purchase from the town of Irwin for the entire Crestwood Elementary School property, including all buildings and land for the amount of $1.
Okay, any discussion or questions on that? And we'll do a roll call on that.
Dee?
Yes.
Jackson? Need?
Yes.
Nufa?
Yes.
Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and we'll go on to see listing for the sale of Spring Valley Elementary School.
I move the board approve the administration to list for sale the entire Spring Valley Elementary School property, including all buildings and land, on the Wisconsin Surplus Auction website and bring the final bid result for board action on October 22nd.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Do we know when the auction will actually start? I guess I know they say the bidding will happen at the end, but is it gonna get on there like tomorrow or?
We hope to.
We just have to finish taking pictures, JD, and then get it posted to the website.
Then are you gonna share it on the page?
So I would think that that would be by Friday, we'd be able to get that done.
You share it on the Facebook page or something, or you can put a word out there?
We'll also advertise in the wallpaper.
Okay, do you know when the bidding will, after?
I would think that we would do it the day before, Jake. I think we, I showed you an example of one at the committee of whole meetings, and there's some language we'll put in there that all bids would have to be accepted by the school board and reviewed on that 22nd date or whatever. We put that in there, so we probably, we could do that.
And it's a Friday prior to that, yeah, we can look at it.
Yeah. So, it's good, so unless there's more questions, we'll do a roll call vote on that, too.
Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Nufa?
Yes.
Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and we will go on to surplus auction.
If I may, we would like to change the language of the motion for you. As it reads, proceeds from the surplus auction, and then it says memorabilia. Well, memorabilia itself won't be listed on the surplus auction site, so we would like to say proceeds from the sale of the rural school buildings and their memorabilia go to Nabokan School Forest Project. So if you're comfortable with that motion, that's why we'd like to amend it, too.
Would somebody like to make that motion? Ask Julie first.
I will.
And is your second?
Secondary.
And any further questions or discussion?
I guess I was just wondering, because we didn't really discuss it going to the finals.
Great.
Could you say it again, please?
I was just thinking about like, maybe there was some...
We did not discuss other options, oh, okay.
Any other options?
To allocate this money.
You mentioned at the end of the committee of whole meeting as kind of an aside, and we didn't really discuss it.
Well, so...
This is the time to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One of the reasons for putting it towards Nabokan would see that Nabokan has been moving along, they've been fundraising, and they have the large anonymous contribution, and, but you're still short, correct Tim?
Correct.
And...
How much are we short?
We've, we've got just short of $195,000 raised, and a dollar for dollar matching grant of $250,000. So we're getting near the $500,000, but the committee has kind of expanded the original design. And I think we've got estimates somewhere in the neighborhood of, and Jake, help me if I'm wrong, I think between $625 and $675 for a cost on that building. So, you know, we've certainly got at least $100,000 yet to raise.
If I could interject before the rest of your discussion, we did have Spring Valley's sale, if you will, estimate of memorabilia, because we set up free will donations. It was fabulous. We raised, yeah, Mary was there and Heidi was there and Jake too, and Donna. We raised $809, I think. And just the, everything was positive. There was people coming through, took a bit of nostalgia, and it went really, really well.
Did you guys open up the stage and take all those folding chairs out? I had somebody ask me about those and I never, ever...
Somebody asked me about them today, too. Many chairs went, I don't know about folding.
Well, the folding...
Some people didn't take some of the folding chairs.
Yeah, because they were all out, and then Michael Prabaski was wheeling them back in, and he said something about that they were, that somebody was gonna take them, but he wheeled them back under the, maybe that was to hold on to them for somebody, I don't know, but it was fun.
You're available.
No, somebody just wanted to buy them or something.
Well, they're available, right? So, yeah, that's the thought process on sending that money towards the Nabokan School Project. So the Nabokan School Project, Tim, is ready to go, right? You could actually start doing things this fall.
Well, we're hoping, you know, I think at the committee of the whole, we'll have a discussion about where we'd like to go as a committee, and talking with some of the local contractors. I mean, we really, if we're gonna do something by, to get started next spring, we've gotta get on people's radar now and get into some type of a building schedule. And, you know, how far are we gonna get ahead before we actually know what the cost is? We really won't know what that cost is until we get more accurate estimates.
Will you move ahead of anything this year, like putting in a well or septic or?
Well, and that's some discussion we'd like to have with you, because we have to go tomorrow. You know, we've got enough money to do that kind of stuff. Do we have enough money to finish what we need to set out to do?
Don't think we actually have that on the agenda here to discuss.
No, but I think we can get it down to the committee of the whole in October, and we'd like a direction to be able to actually interview contractors and do an invited bid and actually select someone to help lead us through this project.
Were you thinking you might have to use the money for something else, Jessica, or were you just...
I'm thinking that's the only option we've been given.
Right, but were you thinking of something else to do with it?
Not specifically. I'm thinking, I would like to have more options.
Yeah, it could be $500, or it could be 40, you have no idea, thousand, you know?
Well, you have to set one at school.
Yeah. We don't actually have a motion, but...
Yes, there is.
Mm-hmm.
First and second.
We do, yeah. Okay, great. Okay, any more discussion on the motion?
There's no other major projects that we could consider, that Nabokan is really the home of the building, right? Well, you know, I think there are needs across the districts to decide who's coming up and expressly asked.
I don't even know that I, I don't have a problem with donating to Nabokan. I guess I, I mean, it might be nice to see what we actually raise before we vote on what we're gonna do with them.
Jake, were you okay with all the playground equipment?
I mean, I... I mean, yeah, yeah, we could, I mean, there's certainly needs everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. I could, yeah. Could we improve some of the playground? You bet. Improve some of the flooring or the lighting?
And all these things are great.
I mean, yeah, it's really, you know, I kind of feel awkward picking one personally to recommend that you should stick it. I mean, there's needs across the board and that, I guess that's...
I think in this instance, it makes sense because somebody spoke up and said, "We need to look at this. We're short, we need to look for some extra funds."
Mike, if I could add?
Go ahead.
Part of the reason I know that I brought it forward is, you know, we had schools like Crestwood and Pleasantview that had designated school forests on their property. And we know by selling this property, we've limited environmental education opportunities to some of our elementary students. And this was a way to invest in environmental ed and replace property that we had displaced with the safety.
Okay, any other discussion here? Because it's a money thing, I think we'll take a roll call.
Need?
Uh, yes.
Nufa?
Yes.
Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the... LCBGC agreement. And we look at this.
I make a motion that we accept the agreement written in the Boys and Girls Club of Land Lake County and the Unified School District of Antigo for after-school programming with the fourth grade students.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? And we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Nufa?
Yes.
Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
And May?
Yes.
That passes and we'll move on to the dual credit agreement, the MTC.
I make a motion that we accept the proposal to enter into an agreement with North Central Technical College to provide dual transcript credit courses for students at Antigo High School.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? There's no cost associated.
I think it will come later.
Cost will come later, then we'll take a roll call.
Roll call? Hi?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Nufa?
Yes.
And May?
Yes.
Okay, overnight trips?
I move the board approve the overnight trips as presented for cross-country traveling to Minneapolis September 28th, 29th, 2014, near the Antigo FFA to attend the national convention in Indianapolis October 29th to November 2nd, 2018.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, so we'll go on to, there are no resignations.
Correct.
And new hires. Donations.
I move the board accept the following donations. American Transmission Company Trees for Threes Promotion, $150 to the FFA Greenhouse Aid Programs, and Marshfield Clinic, $500 for the Health Department E-CIG Prevention.
Second.
Total, $650.
Still second.
Oh, yeah.
And any questions, comments?
Just we thank them.
And thank you.
Thank you. All those here.
Aye.
Aye.
And the next meeting would be October 22nd.
It's two minutes, there's something after that.
Yes, please tis regard that in Bobby's absence. I was trying to touch myself, board docs. Had that agreement, we still have it's effective this year, so I meant to delete it, and it showed up at the bottom, so I...
That's just the table.
It is.
It's the table.
We'll bring it back to you, yes. We'll bring it back to you, yes, when the agreement is...
That was a motion to a...
A motion to adjourn.
And all those in favor?
Aye.